We would like to call the order of the June 12, 2023 Regular Meeting of the Willoughby Eastlake Schools Board of Education. This meeting is being held in accordance with Section 3313.15 of the Ohio Revised Code. Ms. Crooks, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Bear?
Here.
Mr. Reedy?
Here.
Mr. Roskos?
Here.
Ms. Schatzman?
Here.
Ms. Menser?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We would like to welcome everyone to our meeting this evening. To ensure all are aware of the way these meetings operate, we want to share the following. Prior to this evening, each board member has received for their review and consideration the agenda and materials associated with each agenda item for the board's approval. Board members can discuss the items with the superintendent and treasurer. Board members are not permitted per Ohio Meetings Act and Sunshine laws to conduct conversations regarding board business outside of a public meeting. Tonight will be the first time the board can conduct conversations as a whole regarding the items on tonight's agenda. Board meeting agendas are always available through the district's website for public viewing prior to the board meeting. Community members can always email the board with questions or come and participate in the public comment portion of our meeting. Public comment provides an opportunity for the community to address the school board directly. In order to participate in public comments, participants would sign up before the meeting. When signing up, you are provided a copy of our public participation policy. Participants are asked to abide by those requirements. We will now move on to our agenda. Item 1D. Do I hear a motion to approve item 1D, appoint treasurer pro temp?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve item 1D, appointment of treasurer pro temp.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I second the motion to approve 1D.
Discussion? Ms. Crooks?
Ms. Bear?
Yes.
Mr. Reedy?
Yes.
Mr. Roskos?
Yes.
Ms. Schatzman?
Yes.
Ms. Menser?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to item 2A, approval of agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve our agenda?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve item 2A, approval of agenda.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I will second that motion.
Discussion? Ms. Crooks?
Ms. Bear?
Yes.
Mr. Reedy?
Yes.
Mr. Roskos?
Yes.
Ms. Schatzman?
Yes.
Ms. Menser?
Yes.
Motion carry.
Item 3A, board president Q and A. This entails response to public comment from the May board meeting. We'd like to thank all of our speakers last month for their public comments. Mr. and Mrs. Mara and Mr. DeFranco all spoke about an Ohio High School Athletic Association policy and its implications on the integrity of women's sports. The board discussed the issue prior to the vote to continue our membership in OHSAA. Mrs. Lack, representing the organization Sleep in Heavenly Peace, provided information on how their organization builds beds and provides bedding materials for children in need. She requested the schools get involved in raising funds for her organization. She provided information about her organization that we have passed on to the high school principals. Finally, Ms. Tighe thanked the community for passing the levy and challenged the board and community to use the next few years to educate ourselves about school funding, communicate how we are being good stewards of public funds, work with the mayor, city council, and local businesses to leverage their strengths, and challenge the state legislators to change the current funding model. Item 3B, public comment. Ms. Crooks, do we have anyone this evening?
Yes. John Mara from Timberlake.
Good evening. John Mara, 39, Minewawa Drive, Timberlake. Last meeting, I brought up the fact that we want to protect all our students in the schools and especially for the bathroom use. And on May 26th, Ohio Attorney General Yost issued a legal opinion on transgender bathroom, excuse me, use and regulations. Yost says that desire to maintain privacy from people of the opposite sex applies without regard to their gender identities. The attorney general on Friday issued a legal opinion suggesting that government-owned public facilities have the right to limit bathroom accommodations for transgender people based on sex. Green County Prosecutor David Hayes asked the AG's office whether policies limited the use of restrooms, changing rooms, or locker rooms to someone's assigned birth gender would violate Ohio law. Republican Attorney General Dave Yost issued an opinion Friday saying that "Ohio law does not prohibit entities from adopting policies that limit restroom, changing rooms, and locker rooms to a single sex." "Governmental policies that require the sexes to use different bathrooms are legal," Yost wrote, "unless the policy denies individuals the right to full enjoyment of public accommodations and falls outside the statute's exception." That exception, according to the Ohio Revised Code, says that proprietors aren't allowed to deny anyone full enjoyment of public accommodations except for reasons applicable unlike to all persons. "This means that the operator can limit or deny access only if the reasons for doing so do not take any protected trade into account," Yost said. Yost argued that failing to separate the sexes in public restrooms would in fact accomplish the opposite of anti-discrimination laws. Providing separate bathrooms, changing rooms, and locker rooms for the separate sexes does not violate the right that RC 4112.02G confers, he says. To the contrary, separating the sexes from these private areas helps ensure that no one is on the basis of sex denied the full enjoyment of public accommodations. Yost added that people's desire to maintain privacy from people of the opposite sex applies without regard to their gender identities. "Allowing men to share bathrooms, changing rooms, and locker rooms with women increases the ease in which biological males, most especially male who identify as men, can victimize women or girls," he said. In his opinion request, Hayes also asked for clarification on the authority of Ohio Civil Rights Commission to enforce cases of sex and gender discrimination for clarity on definitions of sex discrimination in public accommodations and for the guidance on whether government entities could be liable for violations of Ohio anti-discrimination law. "Whether the public restroom, changing room, or locker room in a facility owned by a government entity is considered a public accommodation under Ohio's anti-discrimination law is a question of fact and must be determined by the courts," Yost wrote. Yost also wrote that Ohio Civil Rights Commission cannot authoritatively interpret Ohio anti-discrimination law when it comes to public accommodations, except in the cases that specifically come before the commission.
I'm sorry, three minutes are up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy Mara of Timberlake.
I won't be that long. We just agreed who would get up here first. The reason why that was read is because, as you know, at the last meeting, you voted once again on being members of the OHSA. And Ms. Bear, as you talked about how many times you're a sports family and your girls are in sports. I think Ms. Reedy, you asked to table it, to look further into it. I think Ms. Menser, you just wanted to go forth with it, to make the vote. And I think, I'm sorry, Jamie, what's your last name?
Schatzman.
I don't want to be too comfortable. Ms. Schatzman, you just wanted to take a vote on it. I know it's a hard position, but it does say specifically that Attorney General Yost's opinion, being the attorney general, will be highly respected and looked at. Now is the time, over the summer, for you to fully look at this because it includes Yost's opinion about locker rooms. And that's what I'm the most concerned of. Yes, I'm concerned about the bathrooms during the day, but mentor got out of hand by the end of the year and I just talked to him, mom, actually dad, who said, "I'm just going to homeschool." I go, "Really?" He says, "It's just getting worse." With all the agenda now of people making kids more of aware that there's all these different identities you could be, I'm just worried about our girls. Mr. DeFranco, his name was, was up here last month. Father of three, very upset about this. The attorney general said, "You can rule on this. It's allowed." Please take a position for our girls' sports, for our girls' protection, and for our girls' ability to feel like they could succeed competing against other girls. And not another man who identifies that day, because let's face it, it's always somebody who was, who just wants to stir the pot. A lot of times, you can't trust who somebody's saying they are just by pretending who they are, something or not. It makes it bad for everybody. And Yost said he thinks it's good for everybody, for no one to get picked on, whatever they identify as. I just came out of New York City. I saw many, for four days I was there. I saw many different accommodations with single stalls. It can be done. Please, let's not kick it down the road. Let's do it before school begins and take this more seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment?
No, that's all.
Thank you. Moving on to item 4A, board discussion. Ms. Schatzman, do you have an update?
So I will do the legislative update as I've provided some email information that we got from OSBA and other news sources regarding what's been going on in the legislature. The biggest thing is House Bill 33, which is the state budget. So again, to refresh, the governor put forth a proposed budget that went to the House. The House made some amendments, revised it, sent it over to the Senate. Mr. Chiranello and I actually went down two weeks ago and testified in front of the Senate Finance Committee to advocate for updated inputs, 2022 inputs to the funding, which the House had put in there to maintain those and actually to encourage them to maybe even take it a step farther, to fully phase in the Fair School Funding Plan. So we're in year, coming up on year three of a six-year phase-in. So potentially to ask for that. And additionally, I was representing myself as a parent, asked for consideration about why it is that my daughter, for instance, could go and take a voucher and go to a private institution and would get more money from the state than she does to come to our public schools, when our public schools have been such a great resource for her. I also asked why it was fair that public schools have to continue to pay for transportation of students who live in our district but choose to go to school at a private school, whether that's in our district or not. There's like a 30-minute radius. We got a chance to meet Mr., our Senator Jerry Serrino, in person and personally invite him into our district, which he said he would accept that invitation and come in. I know the Senate's been very busy, but we welcome him to come in and look at our schools and see what's actually going on. Unfortunately, the week after we went down there, the Senate released their amended bill. And for our district, it was not great news. We will lose over $1.5 million a year as a district from the House-passed to the Senate-passed budget. And that really has to do with the way they're revising the formula. We were not thinking that the formula would be revised. That was something that was passed in a previous legislature with the six-year phase-in. However, they decided to make some tweaks to the formula, which essentially got rid of the component that weighed in median income. So right now, they look at a district's ability to fund their schools and then meet the gap with state funding. So the way they calculate that is based on property values and then the wealth of the community based on their income. So that was made up partially of average income and then median income. And if we all remember our math, probably that we're teaching, I guess, elementary schoolers is what I would guess. Maybe it's middle school when you get to this. Average versus median, what happens is one person can throw the average very far off. So if we have, you know, one or a few very high-income earners in our district, then that can pull the average way up of our wealth. Versus when you look at median, if you have a couple at the top, you know, that basically weighted out with the few at the bottom, right? So it can't pull it up as much. So because we have a wide variety of income levels in our district, this happens to make it look like our district is wealthier under this new calculation of the formula. So unfortunately, we do not make out with the funding in that case. There are groups down there lobbying who testified last week on behalf of the School Board Association, the Treasurers Association, OASBO, and the Superintendents Association. And we are continuing to keep an eye as they're making additional amendments in the Senate this week. It will then go in front of the Conference Committee, where people from the governor, as well as people from the House and the Senate, will come together and work out a final version of the budget. Ideally, I guess their goal is to do it by June 30th, which would be the end of the fiscal year. So we expect to see a lot going on in this particular week. And then also, obviously, next week, we'll see about whether we think it makes sense to go down and testify again or whether it just makes sense for all of us to contact our legislatures to advocate for what we need as a district. But we would love to see that original formula restored, potentially expanded. I'm not sure if that's going to happen. But just as perspective on the whole, there was decreased funding for K-12 by approximately $250 million in this version of the budget and an increase of nearly $2 million for vouchers. So there was a big change for all of public school, not just our district. Another change was SB 1, which is about essentially taking away some of the duties of the State Board of Education and then dismantling ODE and creating a Department of Education and Workforce, which would report up through the governor's office and would be appointed positions rather than, you know, elected positions and then appointing the superintendent of public instruction. That was rolled into this as well. The State Board of Education testified against that. They've actually asked the attorney general for an opinion of whether that is constitutional or not, which I have not seen an update on that, although they are meeting tomorrow again, the state board. So I'll be watching and I'll let you guys know if they hear anything. And then finally, what's relevant is they restored the third-grade reading guarantee. So the House had written into the amendments that they were taking away the third-grade reading guarantee. That did not mean that third graders could not be retained. It meant that it wasn't automatic if you did not perform on the literacy test. So that is back in there, that the third-grade reading guarantee is going to be mandated if it were to pass as is. Mr. Chiranello and I also went to a talk by Howard Fleeter, who's an economist, on school funding. He actually did a lot of work on the Fair School Funding Plan and the formula. And of note there, he recently, Mr. Fleeter, released a report on vouchers that said the number and percentage of low-income students who are taking advantage of vouchers has significantly decreased. And the number of students who were not in a public school the year prior who take vouchers has continued to increase steadily over time, which, you know, I guess you can't prove for sure, but seems to suggest that people who would already have gone to private schools are the ones who are taking advantage of vouchers the most. So it's a little bit concerning to people because they think the original inception of vouchers was this should be money for kids who can't succeed in public school or have a better alternative. So it seems like there's more and more of an occurrence of people who are not even trying out their local public school. So that's just something I wanted to let you guys know and keep an eye on. There's many, many other bills and legislation going on in the House and Senate as committee meetings proceed this week. And there'll be full sessions of both bodies this week. But things to note is there are a couple of bills that have to do with giving exemptions in terms of excused absences for Religious Expression Days, 4-H, and a few other things. And it's just something to keep an eye on as we're looking. And I think this has been discussion in the legislature is we have all these kind of mandates and we have all this testing and we have these required instruction hours. Is, as you start to build on these things, although individually, they all sound great, how are teachers and educators able to get in those tests and hours and all of those sorts of things? There's also a social studies curriculum revision that is currently proposed. And again, we'll see what that all entails. But one of the biggest concerns, I think, that school districts and educators have is, is this another unfunded mandate which will require, you know, school districts themselves to invest lots of money in revising their curriculum without necessarily funding that's set aside in the budget? So I think those are things that we'll keep an eye on. I'll continue to keep you all updated. And then I will let you know if we need more folks. And if anyone in the community who's listening to this meeting wants to get involved in talking to your legislatures about school funding, I am happy to answer any questions at any time. And I think Mr. Chiranello and I's testimony is posted on the district's website as well as the district's social media pages, I believe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you need anybody else to go down, just let me know. I'm always looking to find excuses to get out of work. So this would definitely be something that I'd be interested in if you need more people.
And I'm happy to answer any questions now, if anyone has any.
I think I do. I have a question. First, thank you for taking up your personal time to go down and testify. What, how are you received when you go down? Do you feel it's impactful every time that you go down and speak? Or, I mean, the before and the after the meeting, what does that?
Yeah, I mean, I would say that one really notable thing is I'm sure that Senator Serrino gets tons and tons of contacts and emails all the time, right? And I have not been successful at, you know, making a connection prior. So just the fact that, you know, put a face with a name and he was very gracious and gave us time to have conversations with him. And it was, it was nice to make that connection and personally invite him in and get kind of his input that he would love to come into our schools. So I think that is something that Mr. Chiranello was working towards and I've been working towards as legislative liaison. So on that note, in terms of connecting with our legislatures, I think, very beneficial. I also think it's important to keep going down and testifying because they do get lots of written testimony, they get lots of emails. But I think it's, you know, one impactful to get up there and show them that you're willing to take the time out of your day and go and speak. And when they're hearing the same thing from numerous school districts coming in, asking for the same sorts of things, and you give them an opportunity to ask you questions about why does that impact your district? Or, well, we thought this thing, is this really going on? There's a little bit more of that dialogue back and forth because there's a real-time question and answer. So you do think that is really important. And I also think if we don't show up there in person, sometimes it's easy to lose sight of what's going on on both sides because there are many, many people who feel very passionately about school vouchers, for instance, whether it's a parent for their child or there's different organizations or some of these schools that rely on funding, right? There's many religious schools or charter schools who will go down time after time. And they'll actually come in and they'll bring, you know, groups of students with them. I think that's hugely impactful to hear from kids about why, you know, a voucher was life-changing for them. And so when we And so when we, as public schools, don't show up every time, then, you know, whether it's the people listening, whether it's the committee themselves, or whether it's the other senators and representatives who probably watch the replay, you know, who don't necessarily see all of the written testimony or have time to read through the pages and pages of written testimony, I think it starts to look imbalanced. So I do think it's important to give us a voice. I hope that answers your question.
More than.
Does anyone have anything else for board discussion? Okay, moving on to Item 4B, Transition Plan. Do I hear a motion to approve Item 4B Transition Plan, which is for Superintendent Dr. Patrick Ward for the 2023-2024 school year?
Madam President, I move to approve for transition, for 4B, for Transition Plan.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I second 4B Transition Plan for Dr. Patrick Ward.
Discussion.
I think the only thing I'd like to bring up is I had met with Dr. Ward, and one of the things that we discussed was on the Transition Plan, it mentions cottage meetings. It says it on the document, and instead, it's going to be the coffee talks in the community. So I figured it was worth kind of putting out there. So it's just the same thing delivered in a little bit different venue.
Thank you. Anyone else?
No.
Ms. Crooks?
Ms. Bear?
Yes.
Mr. Reedy?
Yes.
Mr. Roskos?
Yes.
Ms. Schatzman?
Yes.
Ms. Menzger?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving on to Item 5A, Approval of Minutes of May 8, 2023. Do I hear a motion to approve 5A?
Madam President, I will make a motion to approve Item 5A, Approval of Minutes of May 8.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I second Item 5A, Approval Minutes, May 8, 2023.
Discussion. Ms. Crooks?
Ms. Bear?
Yes.
Mr. Reedy?
Yes.
Mr. Roskos?
Yes.
Ms. Schatzman?
Yes.
Ms. Menzger?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving on to Item 5B, Approval of Minutes of May 15, 2023. Do I hear a motion to approve Item 5B?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve 5B Minutes of April, or May 15 of 2023.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I second Motion, Item 5B, Approval of Minutes, May 15.
Discussion. Ms. Crooks?
Ms. Bear?
Yes.
Mr. Reedy?
Yes.
Mr. Roskos?
Yes.
Ms. Schatzman?
Yes.
Ms. Menzger?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving on to Item 6, Treasurers' Report. Ms. Crooks?
Item 6A, Monthly Financials. We did receive the Homestead and Rollback in May, and this will be our last large influx of revenues until real estate taxes in June or July. Our revenues are 98.39% collected, with only large revenue source in June being state foundation payment. Our expenditures are under our expected amount by 3.5% through the fiscal year. This is due to the advances not being paid until the month of June. Our largest categories, salaries and benefits, are right in line with where we are through the year. End of the year invoices are being paid, and some of our projects are now underway throughout the district in order to get buildings in shape for fiscal year 24, for FY '24 school year. We are still seeing interest rates increasing for our investments, and we will continue to monitor our cash and investments to determine the best way to maximize our interest revenues. Item 6B, FY '24 Permanent Appropriations. This is to establish a budget for FY '24 effective July 1, 2023. Item 6C?
Wait, we have to, we have to vote on that one.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
No, that's okay. Do I hear a motion to approve Item 6B, Fiscal Year '24 Permanent Appropriations?
Madam President, I will make a motion to approve Item 6B, Fiscal Year '24 Permanent Appropriations.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I second Item 6B, Fiscal Year '24 Permanent Appropriations.
Discussion. Ms. Crooks?
Ms. Bear?
Yes.
Mr. Reedy?
Yes.
Mr. Roskos?
Yes.
Ms. Schatzman?
Yes.
Ms. Menzger?
Yes.
Motion carried. I'm just so excited to read off these names. Item 6C, Neonet MOU Lease Agreement. This is an agreement that has been in the works for a few years. Now that Neonet has acquired the LGCA, they want a secondary location in the Lake Geoga County region. Neonet, Northeast Ohio Network for Educational Technology, is an information technology center, ITC, that serves school districts throughout Northeast by providing technology, services, and support to school districts. We have agreed to lease a portion of the second floor in return for fiscal support services that we currently pay about $60,000 a year to Newwaka.
Do I hear a motion to approve Item 6C, Neonet MOU Lease Agreement?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve Item 6C, Neonet MOU Lease Agreement.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I second 6C, Neonet MOU Lease Agreement.
Discussion.
I just wanted to issue a thank you to Mr. Murphy and Mr. Chernello for working to cut our expenses and increase our services. So I know it was a lot of effort and time. Thank you.
Ms. Crooks?
Ms. Bear?
Yes.
Mr. Reedy?
Yes.
Mr. Roskos?
Yes.
Ms. Schatzman?
Yes.
Ms. Menzger?
Yes.
Motion carried. 6D, Willoughby Eastlake Public Library Budget. This is an annual requirement, as we are required by law to approve the budget for the library.
Do I hear a motion to approve 6D, Willoughby Eastlake Public Library 2023 Budget Request?
Madam President, I motion to approve 6D, Willoughby Eastlake Public Library 2023 Budget Request.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I will second that motion.
Discussion.
While we're talking about the library, I just wanted to mention, in case you guys were not aware, of the free lunch program that they're doing for students over the summer. I know they're trying to get the word out to any families, no student should go hungry even during the summer without school lunches, and I just appreciate our public library so much, and all they do is partner with our schools and get our students library cards. So just wanted to make sure you all knew how much I love the library.
And they also have an amazing summer reading program for the kids. And if anybody didn't know, the summer reading program's also for adults. I found that out this year.
I know. The library's amazing.
Ms. Crooks?
Ms. Bear?
Yes.
Mr. Reedy?
Yes.
Mr. Roskos?
Yes.
Ms. Schatzman?
Yes.
Ms. Menzger?
Yes.
Motion carried. Item 6E, Establishment of New Accounts. These are new class of accounts for incoming underclassmen. Item 6F, Advance of General Funds. This is a result of the Health Insurance Fund exceeding the funded amounts and no longer having an adequate level of cash and reserve for the fiscal year-end per Ohio Revised Code. Item 6G, Purchase Orders. Both of these purchase orders had invoices exceeding the amount by more than $3,000. Many times, these are a series of multiple invoices over a period of time and not one invoice exceeding the PO. There are more listed than usual this month, as POs are becoming exhausted and budget limits are being met as the fiscal year begins to wind down. Item 6H, Gifts and Donations. We received, I'm sorry, Sereno Photography donated $325 to the South High Class of 2023. Longfellow PTA donated $1,917 for field trip buses. Willoughby South High Boosters Club donated $500 to 189220, the South High Maine. Daniel Gotti of Wickliffe donated a 2012 Honda Civic to the NCIW Auto Technology Program, and the Progressive Insurance Foundation, Name Your Cause, donated a total of $3,000 to seven schools.
Thank you to all who have donated. Moving on to Item 7, Superintendent Resolutions. Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, Madam President. The first item for your consideration, Item 7A, Amendment Courseware and Exact Path Renewal. The Amendment Courseware is used for academic credit recovery in our, in our alternative learning programs, such as Success Academy, Bridges of Success, and Pace. Excuse me, it is primarily used for learning loss and remediation, but it's also been valuable for students who are working on advancing their skills in areas of strength. The growth reports for students in Exact Path have been very positive. Exact Path is used for K-12 students and includes three benchmark diagnostics per year, along with personalized learning paths for students in reading and math. So following a review of all the alternatives to Amendment Courseware, the Curriculum Department and Building Principals have made this recommendation to renew this contract for one year. This item aligns with the strategic plan under academic excellence and student wellness. It helps to ensure that we are working to deliver high-quality instruction.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve Item 7A, Amendment Courseware and Exact Path Renewal?
Madam President, I motion to approve Item 7A, Amendment Courseware and Exact Path Renewal.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I will second that motion.
Discussion. Ms. Crooks?
Ms. Bear?
Yes.
Mr. Reedy?
Yes.
Mr. Roskos?
Yes.
Ms. Schatzman?
Yes.
Ms. Menzger?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item B for your consideration is Therapy Services Agreement. IEPs, also known as Individualized Education Plans, outline goals and objectives that must be met in an educational setting, so that special education students are given supports they need to learn. These goals are written by the IEP team and often include physical therapy. At times, it is necessary for some students to receive services such as physical therapy during the summer months. This item, which aligns with our strategic plan under academic excellence, ensures that students will receive the physical therapy services they require during the summer months and will aid in their academic progress.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve Item 7B, Therapy Services Agreement Extended School Year 2023? Madam? Go ahead.
Madam President, I motion to approve Item 7B, Therapy Services Agreement Extended School Year 2023.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I second 7B Therapy Services Agreement Extended School Year 2023.
Discussion. Ms. Crooks?
Ms. Bear?
Yes.
Mr. Reedy?
Yes.
Mr. Roskos?
Yes.
Ms. Schatzman?
Yes.
Ms. Menzger?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item C for your consideration is the Classified Non-Union Pay Schedule. Each year, we do try to review our pay schedules and adjust them as needed so that we can employ and retain high-quality personnel. This item shows the adjustments made to next year's hourly rates to some of our non-union employees and substitutes. As you probably know, it's been a struggle to find people on a regular basis, especially in these positions, so we felt it necessary to, to try to at least make some adjustments to the salary schedule. This, of course, aligns with our strategic plan and fiscal responsibility and collaboration. It ensures that we are utilizing district finances responsibly and that we're able to recruit and retain high-quality employees.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve Item 7C, Classified Non-Union Pay Schedule?
Madam President, I will make a motion to approve Item 7C, Classified Non-Union Pay Schedule.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I second the motion for 7C, Classified Non-Union Pay Schedule.
Discussion. Ms. Crooks?
Ms. Bear?
Yes.
Mr. Reedy?
Yes.
Mr. Roskos?
Yes.
Ms. Schatzman?
Yes.
Ms. Menzger?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item D for your consideration is the Elementary Gallipade Social Studies Grade 3-5 Adoption. Gallipade is an educational resource that is used for students studying social studies in grades 3 through 5. It is the only elementary social studies curriculum that is 100% aligned to the Ohio Learning Standards. I'd like to thank our curriculum coordinator, Nikki Stotler, for working with others to identify this program as one that will help to improve the academic success. I'd like to also thank Gina Kevren for her work on this as well. Passage of this item ensures that we are working to provide high-quality education to students and improving academic excellence. Item E for your consideration is the Eureka Math II Grades K-5 Adoption. Eureka Math curriculum is currently being used in our elementary classrooms. The original version has now been updated to include components that are more rigorous, implementation of conceptual modeling, and several other features that will enhance teaching and learning. This spring, all elementary teachers and principals had the opportunity to meet with consultants from Eureka Math and learn about the changes to the program. Following those meetings and review of the changes, the participants overwhelmingly supported moving to the new addition of this curriculum. I would like to thank those who participated in the research, and this aligns with the strategic plan under academic excellence and student wellness. If passed, it will allow us to develop and deliver high-quality educational programs at home and school. Item F for your consideration is another one of those MO, memorandum of agreements, this one with Cleveland State, for a school psych program internship. This item references a partnership, of course, with Cleveland State, will engage the assistance of a school psychology intern who will work under the supervision of one of our current employees. This item aligns with strategic plan in two areas, academic excellence and student wellness, and sustained community and engagement partnerships. It ensures that we are working to deliver high-quality instruction while expanding mutually beneficial partnerships, linking community resources to support students. And then finally, we're, Item G for your consideration is a Special Services Agreement. In this item, you'll see agreements with LEAF, the Lake Geoga Education Assistance Foundation, that pertain to North and South High Schools. This group partners with the district to assist students as they prepare for graduation. They provide families and students with information about things such as how to fill out that awesome FAFSA form that we all love, that we've been through that already, and how to obtain financial aid and scholarships, obviously very important. They also help students learn additional information about career pathways upon graduation. This item aligns with the strategic plan again in two areas, academic excellence and student wellness, and sustained community and engagement partnerships. It ensures that we are working to deliver high-quality instruction while expanding mutually beneficial partnerships, linking community resources to support students.
Want to keep going?
Sure.
Bring it home.
Item 8 for your consideration is the Personnel Agenda. You'll see on this month's agenda that we have several new administrative positions that are being filled. You'll see that many of them are sitting in the audience right now, which I'm sure will have them come up at the end of the meeting, and if they haven't done so already, please make sure you come up and introduce yourselves to our board. We have, in recent, recent months, have experienced several retirements. I would like to thank those who have retired and welcome our new employees. This is an exciting time for Willoughby Eastlake, and I know that our new employees will help take the district to new levels of excellence, especially under Dr. Ward's leadership. This item aligns with strategic plan under operations, safety, and fiscal responsibility and collaboration. It ensures that we are working to manage available financial resources and assets efficiently and effectively, and recruiting high-quality employees to maintain a high-quality workforce. And of course, that applies for A, B, C, and D on Item 8, you know, all parts of the Personnel Agenda.
Thank you.
Sure.
Item 9, Unfinished Business. Does anyone have board discussion for unfinished business? Item 10A, Meeting Notification. The next regular Board of Education meeting is scheduled for Monday, July 10, 2023, at 7:00 PM at the Administration Building, 35353 Curtis Boulevard in Eastlake, Ohio. Item 11A, Adoption of Consent Calendar. Do I hear a motion to approve 11A, Adoption of Consent Calendar?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve Item 11A, Adoption of Consent Calendar.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I second 11A, Adoption of Consent Calendar.
Discussion. Ms. Crooks?
Ms. Bear?
Yes.
Mr. Reedy?
Yes.
Mr. Roskos?
Yes.
Ms. Schatzman?
Yes.
Ms. Menzger?
Yes.
Motion carried.
12A, Do I Hear a Motion to Adjourn?
Madam President, I make a motion to adjourn Item 12A.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I second 12A in our shortest board meeting, I think, in two years.
The sun is still up.